All right, as authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop preserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30, we have a quorum, and I am calling this meeting to order. Mayor Protem Nelson couldn't be with us tonight. He has a job besides the one that pays, how much do you guys, seventy-five dollars a month? Yeah, he has a full-time job, and he was required to be out of town, so he apologizes for not being here tonight, but he is out of town for business. We are so lucky tonight to have two young ladies from Bluebonnet Elementary. And the first young lady I'd like to introduce is Rosalie Beltran. Rosalie, if you will come, you can come stand up here where we talked about, and turn around and face the audience and smile, so they can see your pretty smile. She is in fourth grade, her favorite subject is math. She's thought about being a mechanic, and I'm trying to talk her into being a mechanical engineer, we'll see how I'm doing on that. She has started playing tennis with her sister, and she really enjoys choir, but one of the reasons that she is here with us is that she placed second in the Austin Regional Science Fair. And her project was what material would make the best hot air balloon? And it turns out, a regular old office trash bag makes the best hot air balloon. With her tonight, we have Olivia Prokop. Olivia, you want to come stand by your friend? And smile, everyone can see you. She also attends Bluebonnet Elementary. Her favorite subject is math, and she pointed out to me that she's in fourth grade and does not have to know what she's going to be when she grows up yet. She is very interested in, she thinks she's going to be interested in volleyball. She, too, placed second in the Austin Regional Science Fair, and her project was on the top ten best fruits for your health. And the top fruit of the top ten is grapefruit. So, you always learn something when you come to City Hall. If everyone would please rise, these young ladies are going to lead us in the pledges.
[Inaudible] 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 [Inaudible]
If you guys would please give them a round of applause, and Brandon's going to take their picture. Hang on, smile for the paper. Face him, face him. Colin, are you going to grab one, too, or no? Okay, all right. And if you would please remain standing, we have the honor of Pastor Bernie Jackson from Trinity Zion Ministries, and she's going to be leading us in our invocation tonight.
You guys want to stand with me while I pray? All right, let's pray, okay? All right. Gracious Father, we thank you once again. We thank you for your grace and the mercy that you continue to show us. Tonight, we come before you, God, asking that you would give us your guidance, your wisdom, for this council, for this city, for the leadership, for the employees. We ask for peace, Lord God. We ask for all of us to work together, God, for what is good and what is righteous. We ask that none of us would do any harm to one another, God, that we would be in a position to glorify you and to help one another. So just bless them tonight, God, as they do the business of this city, and let those of us who elected them trust them, that they would have the best interest of this community in all of their dealings. We thank you for Jesus, in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, guys.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Reverend Jackson, really appreciate your time. All right, we are moving on, we're going to go over our mayor's report really quick. Before I get started, I have a couple of things, I have some public service announcements, and then I have two really fun things to talk about. My first public service announcement is, if you did not get your flu shot, it is not too late. And please, wash your hands, I get to be on calls with the coronavirus that we're all hearing about, and the flu is running hot and heavy these days, so, and I'm speaking to city staff, if you're sick, stay home. Like, we just really need to get past this flu season. And the other thing I want to remind everybody of is that next Tuesday is Super Tuesday. And my personal philosophy is if you don't vote, you don't get to gripe. And from the phone calls that I get, we have a community that does like to voice their opinion, so I would encourage everyone to make sure that they get out and vote on Super Tuesday. And then I have two fun things to share. For those of you who did not see it, Thursday, February 20th, our friend, good friend and Chair of our Planning and Zoning Commission, Debbie Moore, wrote a wonderful article, and in that article, she talked about the fantastic service that she got from Curtis Irwin, and she mentioned Bubba and a couple of the other guys with BP&amp;L. And it is, they have always gone above and beyond, and I just wanted to thank them publicly, and thank Debbie for recognizing them. They did a great, they do a great job all the time, and they really took care of her. Then, the other thing that I would like to share is I got a letter from the Flotonia Police Department, and they had reached out to Bastrop and had some concerns, and they were so impressed, Chief Nagy, with you and Officer McIntyre and your response to their request. Flotonia's a small town, and we small towns have to stick together and help each other out. And I wanted to read one sentence. "Without hesitation, Chief Nagy and Officer McIntyre offered to assist church members with their needs and provided a solid framework and guidance that will serve to dramatically enhance the safety and security of the church and its members." So we have a police force that not only takes care of the Bastrop community, but is also helping take care of the Flotonia community. Can we please have a round of applause for our outstanding staff? And with that, we will move on to my mayor's report. Been kind of busy here this first part of February. In the upper left-hand corner, do you have the clicker? There we go. The upper left-hand corner, that is Terry Lynn Moore, who is our Executive Director of the YMCA. She and I are standing between James and Louis, and those, James is the Executive Director of all of YMCA, and Louis, I think, is a Senior Vice President. But that was at, and the picture below is everybody at the ribbon-cutting for the YMCA because they offered, for a community that does not have physically a YMCA building, it's pretty impressive, the number of programs and people that are served, and they were able to get a lease of the building next door, and so they have one across the street, two next door, and it was just a great day, and I think there were probably fifty or sixty people there for that ribbon-cutting, and just really a fun time. The bottom left-hand corner is proof that I have a husband, and we were at the Chamber Banquet. He lets me pick three events that he will go to, and the Chamber Banquet is one of them. The Bird City Coalition, we were all out at the State Park celebrating the designation, you guys remember, because we've talked about it before, we were one of four cities in Texas that got the Bird City designation. So that's the team of folks that worked so hard, you'll recognize many of them, and there'll be some additional events that we're doing with them. Right above that, you will see some pretty impressive artwork from the main event. Some of our businesses on Main Street put their own event together, and one of those pictures is in front of the museum, and one of those pictures was from in front of Liberty Glen, and just a great Saturday event, I think they had a really good response to that. And I want to thank Dallas Wayne for hosting the Farm Street Opry. He is going to start doing that when he's not traveling, and not only did he emcee the event, but he also sang a couple songs, and those of you who have heard Dallas know what a fantastic voice he has, and it was really a blessing for him to be there. In the upper right-hand corner, I attended the Bastrop County Board of Realtors banquet, and Rookie of the Year, Kerry Fossler, is in the audience today. Let's give Kerry a round of applause. [Applause] That was a really neat event to be at. And then below that was a ribbon-cutting for Cravat Nutrition, that Cravat is inside the Anytime Fitness Building, and they had a really good turnout for their ribbon-cutting. And below that was the Black History Month program that was at the library. The high school students were on a panel, Councilmember Jackson emceed that, and one of the girls danced. It was just, it was a really great event on that Saturday to kick off Black History Month. The following page, I really did all of these things, from February 14th to here. The Parabic Plumbing Ribbon Cutting was this afternoon, they were celebrating their twentieth year in business. And when you have small businesses in your community that are able to survive for twenty years, it's really something to be said, so there'll be, you'll see pictures of that next time. For the upcoming events, there are some ribbon cuttings, I've got a TML, and Councilmember Jackson will be attending as well, the TML Board Meeting on Friday. February 29th, there are nine hundred and thirty-seven things going on, and I'm going to make all that I can, but I'm really going to do my best to make it to the Empty Bowl Event, because that's one of my very favorite events. Also want to let everybody know that the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast this year is going to be a Mayor's Prayer Lunch. It will be at the Convention Center. It'll start at 11 o'clock, there's some networking from 11 to 11:30, and the event will start at 11:30, and the speaker is the First Lady of Texas, Cecilia Abbott. So if you haven't already bought tickets, we'd encourage you to participate in that. And then there's other things I have to do as well. And our next council meeting will be on March 10th. So, with that, Councilmember Peterson, do you have anything to share with us tonight? Councilmember Rogers?
[Inaudible]
Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm the, as you know, I'm the liaison to the Historical Landmark Commission. Last week, we met. The Commissioner gave certificates of appropriateness for several buildings downtown that are being upgraded, renovated, or adapted for new uses. It went smoothly, and the program to bring the city into the Certified Local Government Program is moving along. It is a program from the Texas Historical Commission, and once we get that certification, we will be open for all kinds of grants for the city.
Excellent. Councilmember Jackson?
I just wanted to say that after getting through, thank God, I got through the Valentine's Weekend, the show, the Cabaret Musical Dinner Theater, before all this allergy stuff came in, but that turned out nicely. But the very next day, on Sunday, the 16th, I hosted a movie screening of the movie American Sun, and our own interim Police Chief Nagy was there. He was the only law official in the whole county that was involved, invited to attend it, so I thank him for attending. It was a very good screening and community discussion, and we're really happy to have someone from the city, to have him there, from law enforcement. I will not be going to the TML Board Meeting on Friday, because I am going to be in Galveston, I'm receiving an award from the Texas Recreation and Parks Society, and unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm receiving their Lifetime Member Award, but I'm going to have to miss the TML Board Meeting so I could do that. And I just wanted to mention to the council, I had mentioned earlier, I think I talked to the City Secretary about the possibility of us doing a resolution for Senator Watson because of all of his outstanding service to us, especially in Bastrop. I was looking back, and I remember about four years ago, he was voted legislator of the year, and we hosted him here in Bastrop for one of our TML regional meetings, and not only just because of that, but because of all the great things that he did, he's done for us over the years, and particularly in this last legislative session. So, I'm hoping that we can get that done. And that's all that I have.
Excellent, thank you so much. Mr. Jobe, anything you need to share with us tonight?
I won't be speaking tonight, but I'm going to give my time to our Fire Chief, Andreas Rosales, he just got back from, I believe it was at Minnesota, where he's going to tell us about the new fire truck. And then interim Chief Nagy also had coffee chats this evening, so he's going to update us on that.
Oh, great. Wisconsin, do they not build fire trucks where it's warm?
No.
That's the deal.
No, apparently not. There was one in Florida, but we didn't get that plant, so. So I put a couple of pictures, and I got handouts, so that y'all can see them closer if you want the handouts. But we got to do every kid's dream, we got to go to the actual factory and walk the whole plant, start to finish on how they build the apparatus, and so I took a couple of pictures, I threw them up here, that's them welding the cab together, this is the paint booth where they take it all apart after they build it, and then they send it through this paint booth. This is them, like, taking the chassis, putting it together, and so like, it's a huge assembly line, and they put trucks out every four hours.
Wow. Then why's it taken so long to get ours?
I don't know. I guess because they have, like, so many assembly lines, I don't know, it's a good question. So, but it moves through the line pretty quickly, and so, just kind of looking through, and this is called the blue floor, that's where we'll see ours in July for the ladder truck, and then in August for the, for the, for the engine, we'll see it on this blue floor to do our inspections. It's where we go through, like you do your, when you buy a new house, you go through with that blue tape, and you tape it up and make, have them make corrections to it if it needs to be. So as I was there, it snowed eight inches, it was, it was cold, so, super cold in Wisconsin. But this is what our aerial will look like, it's kind of a graphic representation of what it'll look like. And then this is what our, our engine will look like, just the paint scheme and the lettering that it looks. One of the things we did do is, by doing this, we also redesigned our patch to match our trucks, so we're going to retire, we'll be retiring the current patch we have now, and we'll be moving to this patch over the next year. And we'll, when we do our, our push-in with the trucks and our uncoupling of the hose for our new, or remodel of the station, we'll introduce this patch as well. So, other than that, any questions? And I'll turn it over to Chief Nagy, but I got a patch for you, so I'll pass these out, and if you want, you want a copy of the engine, to look at it up close or show it around?
Chief Rosales, are you a little bit excited?
Yes, absolutely. I'm super excited, it is a, a life, this is a, usually a once-in-a-lifetime type deal.
Awesome. Councilmember Ennis?
While we've got the chief here, I'd like to compliment him and Chief Nagy, but particularly Chief Rosales and all of his, his fire personnel on the Doherty Fire, that was quite something that you had to deal with, and I was there, and you worked really, really, really hard to get that fire under control.
Yes, sir, the church street fire? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it was a, a unique, it's a historic structure, so it's, it's very unique challenges itself, but the guys did a great job, we had every agency in the county there assisting us. But yeah, teamwork, and the equipment, and the manpower that you guys allow us to have helps us, so, thank you, guys.
Compliments to you.
Thank you.
In your stead.
Really good job. Chief Nagy?
Yes, so just like City Manager Jobe said, we had our first coffee with the chiefs. So you can see up on the left, that was kind of our advertisement or our marketing, and it was great for Colin and Rick to put that together, it went really good. So we posted that on Facebook, and we got quite a few responses. So on the left is going to be a picture, now, to the very left, there was actually probably five or six other people, so we had a total of 21 people, so we packed the room together. I was the only one to drink coffee, I guess Assistant Chief Stefanik drank coffee as well, so, that's all right. We discussed just community relations, and that's part of what we're trying to do. As the interim chief, I'm trying to set the new standard for the Bastrop Police Department. And part of that is just going to be open communication, open communication, and more open communication, until the community is tired of me communicating with them. That's, that's my goal, I don't know if I ever meet it. But we talked about speeding in certain parts, because of course, we talked about Fisherman's Park was a topic, and we also talked about some solicitors, and then lastly, my favorite topic, social media, so we talked about them a little bit as well. I've also got some other things I wanted to quickly let you know. We had two officers that attended the most up-to-date, evidence-based, and data-specific de-escalation course, and they're instructors, so they can instruct our officers on how to de-escalate difficult situations. We had an additional officer that attended mental health officer training, so I think that's a total of about six of us patrol officers that are capable of making some very significant decisions for someone that is in a mental crisis. We have two emergency vehicle operations course instructors, this is where we teach officers how to drive fast, that's part of our job, and we know how to do it safely. And then lastly, Assistant Chief Stefanik and I attended what's called the Force Science Institute, and this again is up-to-date, evidence-based data on what happens during officer-involved use of force or response to resistance from minor, maybe just handcuffing all the way up to if there was some sort of officer-involved shooting, and that's really important. Lastly, I want to thank you for recognizing myself and Community Officer McIntyre, she did all the work, so I really want to give her 100% of the credit, she did a lot of work, I think she might have actually done another presentation today. So as a result of that, Officer McIntyre received one of our coins, this is something that will really kind of, small wins make a really big difference, especially at the police department. And so I wanted to give each of you a small win as well.
All right.
[Inaudible] On the front, it has our badge, and on the back, it has the Police Code of Honor.
Thank you.
And I promise, Chief Andreas and Rosales, I did not coordinate this.
Outstanding.
But that is it, thank you.
Thank you so much. Council, any questions for Chief Nagy? Councilmember Ennis?
Just thanks for all that you're doing.
No problem.
I really appreciate you having the coffee chats, and just the constant reminder that I always talk to people about, we, as we all know, reporting it to social media is not the same as calling 911.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you. All right, Council, we're moving to page two, and Colin, I'm going to give you a heads-up, because you know this is coming. We're going to do Item 5A, Freezin Nichols has got a presentation for us, and then we are going to be scooting over to some items for individual consideration, we've got some folks that don't necessarily want to spend the evening with us, so we'd be going a little bit out of order. And one thing I do, just in case there's anyone here for that item, Councilmember Jackson, I think you, is there something you want to tell us about Item 9C?
Yes, I was, I talked to some of the Parks Board members and some of the other members, and they were wondering about us delaying that until after they have gotten a chance to review the actual bids themselves, they would like to, to check them out, and so it's going to be on our next Parks Board's agenda that that will be happening. So I'm hoping that we could, as a council, I mean, we can look at the presentation if we need to, but as far as accepting it and everything, they would like to have some input on that.
So, it sounds like the recommendation is to pull Item 9C, as I, in a conversation I had with the city manager, the bids were opened the day after the Parks Board meeting, so they didn't have an opportunity to review it. So, the Parks Board's meeting next week, and then we would put it on the agenda for March 10th, if that's agreeable to you.
I think that's what, I think that they would be much happier if they could, if we could work it out that way.
Great. And I appreciate that staff is trying to get things done quickly, but, you know, it's been such a big project for them. Councilmember Jackson is the liaison to the Parks Board, and other folks have expressed an interest in being involved in that decision, so we'll look for, Council, are you guys okay with that? All right. Councilmember Jackson, everybody's on the same page. All right, with that, Mr. Jobe, we are on 5A, receiver presentation from Freezin Nichols regarding the preliminary design report for Bastrop-Simsboro Aquifer Water Supply Facilities. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give a quick recap, because not everybody was on council when we did this workshop, I think it was March 24th, 2018, a couple are still running for office, some of you hadn't been brought on yet. So I wanted to do a quick recap of how we got to where we're at before we let these guys get up and speak. So this is the council's nine focus areas, I'm sure you're very familiar with them. And what we did is we, we took those focus areas along with the comprehensive plan goal that we established when that was adopted, to ensure we have long-term water supply. What's really important, I think, to point out here in this chart, because it's a lot of numbers that you may not need to just look at, but here's what I want to point out, is the efficiencies of the wells. If you look at the wells, there's two important things in here. One, they're not very efficient, and two, that they're all alluvial. So when they're alluvial wells, they're subject to drought, and, which is the reason we went out for additional water supply and things of that nature. So just to recap where we're at, you know, these are not drought tolerant, and we were looking for something more sustainable. Again, this is the same resources at Bob Bryant, and you see, that's a little better, but 57% efficiency is still not great, and we think we can do better than that. So what we did at that time is we decided to go back, and we gave you some important information to remember. We were at the, we were at our peak summer demand, we're very close to using our daily demand of what we could actually produce, so that leaves us, you know, we don't want to be without water, that's pretty important, to making sure everything runs around here. Two, we had a person, we had purchased the additional 6,000 acre feet, or a total of 6,000 acre feet, in the Simsboro, which was a huge game changer, that was when council decided as a group that they didn't want to kick the can down the road any longer, we wanted to make sure we did, made good decisions, so then we just went back and reviewed everything that we thought we knew. So what we did is we hired these guys to, to come back and make sure our original assumptions were still solid. So once we got the policy direction, again, I'm just recapping what we talked about, we knew that there would be a consolidated water source, was what we were looking for, and one unified plan. Again, you decided not to kick the can down the road, and we knew there was possibly going to be some additional wells.
Can you go back to that one and remind me on the construct, there's some words there that are, that your sentence got weird, construction of at a minimum, was it the second well?
Yes, so there, yeah, it looks like there's a word missing, that's a great catch. So we, what we had talked about was that in order to produce a certain amount of water to meet our peak demand, we knew we'd have to drill at least
At least two wells.
A second additional well, including probably a redundant well, which is two wells, three, but then, this is why we had these guys do the studies, we could look at the hydrogeology, we could look at the rules for permitting, and make sure we met those, so that's what you'll see in the
Because you're trying to get rid of your gooey wells.
That's correct. We want to get rid of the groundwater under the influence, it's also susceptible to drought.
So bottom, so bottom line, that's a construction of, comma, at a minimum, comma, a second well.
That's correct. I think I probably just got in a hurry.
Great, gotcha.
I didn't know anything about commas, I just knew the sentence didn't make sense.
Well, I had to work on it, boy.
Yes, yes, great catch. Thank you for pointing that out.
But the whole point is that we're trying to get rid of the gooey wells, and if I remember correctly, having the wells at Bob Bryant made us not compliant for a grant for the park
That's correct.
Because there was water well there.
That was an additional reason, right? So we had, we, Bob Bryant was built originally with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant, and because we installed the well there, it, we are no longer allowed to submit for those until the wells go away.
So there's just all kinds of ancillary benefits.
That's right.
Not, and, you know, from a public work standpoint, you're trying to get us to better water, more sustainable system. I know Mr. Hancock would like to have an idea of what the pH is going to be on a somewhat regular basis.
That's right.
So there's all of those benefits, but then there's also benefits to the community, and to parks, and grants, and some other things as well.
That's correct. We figured out that we want to be able to treat the water for aesthetics as well, and the current configuration that we have, you can't do that, so.
And you're having to mix and do all kinds of stuff.
Yes, it's great to have safe water, but we want it to be, you know, appealing as well. So what we did, and with, or I say we, what these guys did, was we evaluated the treatment options, that's complete, we've secured the additional water supply, we took care of our short-term goals with Aqua. If you remember, it's Emergency Connect, we closed this gap while we're waiting for this report to be finished, and then we determined how long it'll take to realistically build the plant. So with that, I'm going to hand this over to our folks from Freezin Nichols.
Council, any questions for Mr. Jobe? Some of us remember that Wednesday, that Saturday, it was a long day, wasn't it?
It was about a six-hour meeting, and they watched every bit of it, so.
Well, we sat through it, they should at least watch it.
That's correct.
All right.
No, it's good, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. My name is David Munn, I'm the technical lead with Freezin Nichols. We want to start by thanking you so much for allowing us to be part of this very important and momentous project for the City of Bastrop in your future, so, so thank you. Getting into it, I, we understand and appreciate what Trey had in terms of the goal that the city has set for yourself, to establish this the city has set for yourself, to establish this long-term reliable source of water for not only the citizens today, but the citizens of the future. Very admirable goal. You have some challenges, though, in achieving that goal. Challenges in your existing water system, it has some specific needs. Your water system, its capacity is nearing the city's demands. The city's demands are almost at what your current water system capacity is. Appreciate the mayor with the term "the gooey well." I know I've got a good audience when the mayor was throwing out terms like "a gooey well." So that is groundwater under the influence. And what that means is that when water conditions in the river changes, they're going to impact your groundwater quality. So if the, a high turbidity event occurs, if a drought occurs, that is going to affect your water supply. So as Trey said, it is not a drought-resistant supply currently. The other issues are, you've got wells that are in the floodplain, putting them at risk. You've got infrastructure that is nearing the end of its useful life, so every day there's a higher risk of failure. And as Trey pointed out, it is a very inefficient system with those wells, with the cartridge filter treatment method, it has a high operating cost. So again, you're faced with some challenges. Fortunately, though, you have already identified a solution. In broad terms, you're saying your solution is to develop a long-term water supply that is both robust, reliable, and that produces a high quality of water for your community. Not only the community today, but the community into the future in support of your city's developmental plan. Getting a little more granular in terms of the solution, it's going to have a number of components that are necessary to meet what Trey went over, which I'm going to call the project charter that you have set for us. So to achieve that project charter, we're seeing a need for at least three additional wells in Phase 1. A treatment system to make sure we're producing that high-quality water, a transmission line to get the water from its source, which is going to be a well field out on what's called Excess Ranch, to get the water back into town. That's what I'm calling the initial project components. There's also going to be some future components, and we want to make absolutely clear that you guys understand that there will be additional improvements in the future as your city continues to grow. At a point in the near future, the existing infrastructure, the pipe network, the pump stations that deliver the water to the, to your residents, that's going to become the bottleneck in the future once we have addressed the water supply. So just making sure everybody is aware of these future projects.
You skipped over the wastewater lift station. Did you mean to?
I did not mean to. I was going to cover it in a little more detail later on, but thank you.
I knew it was in later on, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
We can do it later, we can do it later.
No, no, it's great, because you're right, I did not mean to skip over that. So we're treating the water, and so we're taking stuff, I'll call it, out of the water. So now we have to dispose of that stuff. So we're going to send it through a force main and dump it into the city's collection system, the wastewater collection city system. And I'll talk about the reasons for why we chose that over other alternatives later on, but thank you, Mayor, for pointing that out. Later on, we're also going to talk about how time is of the essence. But fortunately, you've already set your plan in motion. You've directed quite a bit of work to be done already. The first step was the development of population and demand projections. We've also gone out to the well field, to your, some of your existing wells, and taken water quality samples so that we can determine what is the best method of treatment. We've addressed that question through field testing, bench scales testing, some of which you see in the pictures here, and an evaluation of different alternatives with your staff. That led into groundwater hydrology modeling, and then the preliminary design of those initial components, again, the well field through treatment and transmission, and also conceptual design of some of those future improvements, namely at your existing Willow Plant Site. So where we are now, we are faced with some critical next steps. We're at a point where we're ready to go, at your authorization, into final design of those initial project components, followed immediately by construction. In parallel to that, there will be a master planning effort, where we get a hydraulic model developed of your city to identify where those potential bottlenecks are going to be in your distribution system, and start addressing those in a timely manner. These are the next steps, but before I go into or talk more about that, I want to back up a little bit and tell you a little bit more about the work that we've done to date. So one of the most important first questions was, well, what do we see as the trajectory of Bastrop's growth and population and their water demand? So we approached this question by looking at data, historical data specific to Bastrop. We want to tailor these projections, tailor our assumptions to your city particularly. What we're seeing is over the next two to three decades, the city's population is going to grow beyond 26,000 people. All those people, all that industry, all that commercial development, they're going to need water. As you know, for that growth to occur, for you to attract all that growth, you're going to have to have the infrastructure to support it, and water is a very important part of that. In terms of water demand, we use two different terms, and we look at it a couple different ways. There's the maximum day demand, and you can think of that as that single hottest day of the year, maybe that hottest day in the summertime when you've got your maximum usage. That's maximum day demand. On the other hand, we look at annual average, which averages out not only those peaks, but also those valleys. And that's what we look at whenever we're thinking about your permitted water supply. So you heard Trey mention the 7,600 acre feet per year in permitted groundwater. That equals about, uh-oh, Trey, after all your coaching, I didn't get the clicker right. Okay. That equals to about 6.8 million gallons per day. And I want to point this out because it's important. We see in the average day demand over here that 6.8 MGD is going to last you decades to come, even beyond what we're looking at in terms of a planning period. 6.8 MGD is going to surpass even your 2044 demand. I want to underscore that because Trey used the right word, that's a game changer. That sets up the city for decades to come. On the flip side, the other term that I talked about was maximum day demand. This is what we think of when we're sizing your treatment plant and your transmission. Even on the hottest day of the year, we want to satisfy all the water demand within the So let's talk about that maximum day demand a little bit more. So here, the vertical blue lines show your projected maximum day demand. So from 2019 at 4 million gallons per day, out through 2043 of 10 million gallons per day, you can see how that demand is increasing. The other important line on here is the green line, which shows your current and your future water treatment capacity. So you heard me say earlier that time is of the essence. You can see that if we move forward diligently and aggressively, we can have your new water system online before the summer of 2023, when that next maximum day demand occurs. Now, having said that and talking to Trey, I know that he also has some contingency plans. If we get some hotter weather or a drought sooner, he does have contingency plans on how you can satisfy your water demand. Next, I'm going to go through fairly quickly each of the major components, starting with the raw water source. So we're looking to groundwater as your water source, drought-resistant wells, and we want to make sure that you have enough water available to you. So we use the latest state groundwater availability models. We use those to come up with a proposed well field design with three wells, three additional wells initially, followed by the possibility of having a fourth well in the future, all of those pumping around 930 gallons per minute. So you may be wondering, well, why not have fewer larger wells, or why not push these wells closer together? And that's because these wells, as you remove water from the aquifer, it causes lower pressure immediately around the well, the water in the well goes down. And that's important because it not only affects the capacity of that well, but it could affect the capacity of your well that's adjacent to it, or your neighbor's well that's adjacent to it. And there are some permit requirements which encourage you to be a good neighbor, let's say. So with our modeling and with our proposed well field design, we feel that we've come up with an optimal sizing and spacing that's going to be sustainable for the next 50 years and allow you to continue being a good neighbor as well. The next step was to make sure that we understood what kind of water we would be treating. So we went out to some of your wells, took water quality data, and what we see is that there's a potential for high iron, manganese, and fluoride. And let me make sure that everybody understands that that's not a health risk, but there is an aesthetic risk there. It could be colored water, it can stain laundry, it can stain plumbing fixtures if not treated. So going with your project charter, you have set the bar for high-quality water. So our treatment goal is not just to state minimums, but it's actually to what the American Water Works Association terms as ideal water conditions. So again, setting that bar high. We worked with your staff through a couple workshops to evaluate some different treatment alternatives. We're going to have a two-step treatment process, where first we oxidize the water to get that iron and manganese to come out in a particulate or a solid form, and then we have filters to further remove it. So we worked with your staff to identify what is the important criteria and how to weight those criteria. So coming up with a solution that's a proven industry standard was important. Coming up with a solution that we know we can rely to meet those water quality standards is important, and coming up with a solution that is fiscally responsible. Those were all the things that were important in our selection. And we feel that we've come up with a robust yet flexible treatment design. So working from left to right, one of the first things that you see is actually a square with kind of a dotted rectangle around it. That's actually space for a future treatment unit to be plugged in. We want the design to be flexible, so if in the future the water quality gets worse or we run into some, something else, we can put in additional treatment, but we don't want to pay for that today. We don't want to put anything in that's unnecessary. Again, we want to be fiscally responsible. The next treatment component would be oxidation with chlorine gas. This gives you the most fiscally responsible yet effective method, which is also proven to be safe for your operators and your community. We would then have gravity filters with what's called a green sand for filtration, and that actually gives you an extra layer of protection and oxidation and treatment. From there, it's simply sent into a clear well and then pumped into town, and as the mayor pointed out, we do have that waste stream, that sanitary stream, where we take all that iron and manganese that's been removed, and we're going to send it to your wastewater collection system. Other treatment components because, or excuse me, other project components, because the well water is gathered at this Excess Ranch out in your well field and then treated out there, we have to transport it into town via a 24-inch, 22,000-foot pipeline. Other project elements, we are going to take care of the waste stream by pumping it through a force main, which will run parallel to our potable water pipeline. We selected this over large unsightly sludge lagoons that would be difficult to operate and maintain. This is one of the more simpler solutions that won't have those, that ISO associated with it. And then treatment, or excuse me, further improvements at your Willow Plant Site, which will be determined, along with potential improvements in your distribution system through a modeling and master planning exercise. So next, I'm going to talk about the construction costs, but I want to set the stage a little bit and remind everybody that back in 2018, there was another consultant that came in and presented costs for certain project components. But today will be the first time that you see everything, all of the project components, so I wanted to point out that difference. There's also going to be some other differences in terms of the basis design that have affected the capacity and the cost, which I'll mention, and then certainly there's been some changes since 2018 in just market conditions. We've seen a lot of escalation. So in the table in that left-hand side, we see each of the project components. The middle column is our updated opinion of probable construction cost, and in the far-right column are those couple of project components that were previously presented to you. Now, one thing that's changed is that back when those original components were presented, the idea was that the treatment would supplement your alluvial wells. Well, then you had your workshop, and you said, no, what we're going to do is we're going to establish a long-term reliable solution, and we're going to get away from these problematic alluvial wells. So the new basis of design is completely replacing those, and so it doubles the capacity, and so there is some increase in the treatment and the, more so the transmission costs. I do have all those costs broken out into more detail. Be happy to talk from this and go into any more detail that you'd like, answer any questions. But the one thing that I wanted to point out is the last component to add into the overall project cost, which is the professional services. This would be professional engineering for design, construction, management, and inspection, survey, those types of things. Right now, we just have a placeholder number in there. We have not yet finalized and submitted, or more importantly, negotiated, a proposed fee with your staff. So we're going to work with Trey to make sure that we provide the city with the best value and work with him to bring that placeholder number of $5 million down. The overall cost, as we see for the project, is $38.3 million. We're sensitive and understand that that is not a small number. We're continuing to work with your staff to identify ways to bring that number down through either value engineering, project phasing, or project financing. We actually had a meeting as recently as last week with Trey to go over some ideas of how we might be able to bring that number down without sacrificing the quality and the reliability that you were expecting in the project. The last thing that I'll talk about until we open it up for questions is the project timeline. So I did mention that time is of the essence. We are working with Trey to identify ways of expediting the schedule, giving us a little bit more buffer. One thing that we're going to do is we're going to construct and design the wells in parallel to the design of the treatment system. That's going to give us a couple advantages. It expedites the schedule, bringing the overall schedule down, but maybe more importantly, it's going to allow us to get more data on the wells, more data on the water quality, and we're going to have the ability to scale back the design and the construction cost if we're fortunate enough to run into a situation where the water quality is a lot better than what we think it might be based on the current sampling. So that's something that we're building in. Hopefully, it will pay dividends. Overall, though, we're looking at a 33-month to 36-month delivery time from final design through construction, and that includes a little bit of buffer for startup, commissioning, et cetera. So with that, I would be happy to answer whatever questions you might have.
I had one quick question, that your well filled at 7.8 million, is that three wells or four?
So the, the, and when you say 7.8 million, I want to make sure I get the
Out of the 33, 265, I think if you go back two slides, one more. That well filled, that 7.8 million well filled.
So that is three additional wells, in addition to your well J.
So that, is that three out of the four, or do we, is that one of the wells that we may not need for a while, or that's all three that you're saying we need right off the bat?
So you have well J, which is out there, and then that's three additional wells, and then we do have plans for a fourth well
Okay.
Which would be sometime in the future.
Okay. Counselmember Ennis?
That's quite a jump on the transmission main. What, is that because of the additional wells, or what makes it jump so dramatically? That's, that's a bigger jump than, say, the water treatment plan or anything else you have here.
Right, yeah, good question. I appreciate you allowing me to go into a little bit more detail there. So the, the jump is the original conveyance capacity was only for 3 million gallons per day of water. Again, that was meant to supplement your existing alluvial wells. The higher cost is now for going to 6 million gallons per day, so nearly a doubling of capacity. So that on top of the escalation in the market, and then, you know, through the preliminary design phase, we were able to get into a little bit more detail on it, understanding where we've got some crossings that are going to be a little bit more expensive, and so all of that factored into the nearly doubling, or the more than doubling, of the proposed cost.
What size is the transmission main?
24-inch.
And we went from, what was the original?
Yeah, so let me...
16.
16?
16.
To 24?
And you're calling it trenchless pipe section? I've been out of the business for, is that a bore?
Essentially.
Okay. And the encased pipe, what right-of-way is that, Trey?
There's an LCRA transmission pipe there, but we have to cross. I'm not sure we were aware of originally.
I'm looking at the map of the transmission main, and I couldn't figure out why we had to encase it, but if that's the LCRA usement now, I understand.
And let me take the opportunity to introduce a couple of my associates. So we've got Kendall King with us, who is our project manager, and then Kira Isles, who is our deputy project manager. Kira, do you have any more to say on the questions that have been asked?
You have to come to the mic, or you can't say anything. Sorry, I can't hear you.
Good evening. No, not at this time, everything's been the same. Yes, that is the LCRA raw water transmission main that we would be crossing.
That's why we're having to encase it? And what materials the pipe that you're bidding?
We're planning to do a bid alternate on either ductile iron or PVC pipe materials, really just to go with whichever is more cost-effective, because they're both technically sound technologies.
Who makes that decision? Do y'all make that decision, or does staff, or do we?
They'll bid it as an alternate, and the contractor will bid it, and we'll, and if one of them's twice as expensive, we'll decide to go with the cheaper one. But they'll do it when they bid the job.
But we'll make that decision?
Yeah, yes. As a bid alternate, since we're doing the bid, we get to pick which one we want.
Got you. Thanks.
It's sticker shock. That's why we don't have a lot of questions. I was making sure Ms. Waldron was still sitting upright back there, because she's got to figure out how we get it paid for, so.
And mayor, we've already spoke to our rate consultant, so we can take a look at that. Before we make any big decisions, this will come back. We'll talk about rates, we'll talk about spreading out the debt, we'll talk about phasing, we'll also talk about value engineering, things of that nature. And don't forget, you're turning off two additional plants, so there's some savings there. So we'll bring all that back before any big decisions have to be made.
And I believe Mr. Hancock, and we may give him an opportunity when he's up later, those plants that we're turning off are not modern, efficient, cheap-to-run plants. There is definitely going to be some efficiencies.
I would agree.
Okay, Councilmember Peterson, what we not asked that we should have asked?
I believe we covered it all, especially the trenchless pipe. So we would trade, we'll find out when we get there, but let's just get there.
So council, when we had our workshop back in March of 2018, what we talked about was making good decisions for the long term, strategic good decisions, and what we didn't want to do is keep doing, what's the cheapest thing we can do for the next year, because ultimately that ends up costing us more money. So we appreciate the overview and the strategic approach. That being said, we're going to have to balance that with, we can't just suddenly quadruple our rates, and that we've got to be sensitive to the impact to our current citizens, but we also know, can you even imagine the phone calls if we put out water that is staining people's clothes and we tell them, but technically it's okay to drink? Like, I don't want to be there, right?
That's correct. And if you remember, was it, was the flood in 2019, all that silt came in from the dams?
October of 2018, yeah.
So when that happened, we went through a year's worth of cartridge filters over a two-month period because of poor water quality. So that's, this is a much more robust system, allows us to backwash, it's more, it's much more operator-friendly, because those guys were, I mean, that was just a $150,000 cost in two months. Two months because of inefficiency.
Great job. Thank you guys so much. Any further questions? Thank you very, very much. Appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you.
Okay, as promised, we're going to be jumping around on the agenda. Council, I would invite you to go to the top of page three. We're at items for individual consideration. I don't believe Mr. McKenzie's here, so we are going to go to 9D. We're going to take 9D, 9E, and then we're going to jump to executive session. So 9D is consider action to approve resolution number R 2020-19 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract for the City of Bastrop, Newton, and Jasper Drainage Project to M&amp;C Fonseca Construction Company in the amount of $225,600 as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Hancock?
Yes, me tonight.
Yay!
Thank you, mayor, council, city manager. Actually, we have Tim here with BEFCO, who designed this, to get up and answer some of the questions that I'm not able to answer. But we had six bids on this, and I would like Tim to explain how we got to where we are with asking for M&amp;C Fonseca, which was not the low bid to be recommended.
Okay.
And if I can just speak to that real quick, I noticed in the letter that Tim transmitted and the staff report, it said the second highest bid. It's actually the second lowest bid of the responsible bidder. So just to clear that up, it's not the highest bid, it's the lowest that was qualified.
Yeah, it looked like the bids ranged from 174,000 to 318,000, if I was reading them correctly.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor and council, thank y'all for having me this evening. Yeah, the low bid was submitted by three or four construction. However, one of the requirements as part of the bid submittal is a Form 1295 that we require of all of the contractors upon submission of their bids. They failed to submit that document with their bid submittal, and based on previous projects that we bid with y'all, we declared their bid packaging complete and recommended awarding to the second-low contractor, which is M&amp;C Fonseca Construction. We've worked with M&amp;C Fonseca Construction on other projects. They're a quality contractor, and they'll do a really good job for you guys.
Any questions? All right, and Mr. Hancock, I believe, council, if you go to page 238, you'll see this CIP project, and you'll note that the funding source is a grant that is a 75%, 25% matching grant, and the 25% will be coming out of the 2018 certificate of obligation. So this is something that's been on the books that we knew we were going to do, and Mr. Peterson, I believe the folks in your neighborhood are going to be real happy to see this happening. Anything else, Mr. Hancock, that we need to know?
I have a thing, unless y'all have any questions about it.
Page 238 of the budget.
I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
Given the, second to Mr. Peterson. I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you both very much. Appreciate it. Good job, Mr. Hancock. All right, we're moving on to item 9E, consider action to approve resolution number R 2020-22 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with Ranch Road Development LLC for Section 2 of Pecan Park as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, mayor and council. This is our first public improvement plan agreement, so yay, Scott.
PIPA, right? Is that what we're calling them?
Yeah, there you go. So, and what this, when we came, when House Bill 3167 came out in the shot clock, we had to come back and restructure the way that we took steps into development. So, and to final plat something now, you have to have an approved set of construction plans, they have to be complete and ready to go, and then you can final plat. Well, it turns out that's not the greatest thing if you're a developer, and you'd like to be able to sell lots a little bit sooner. So what this agreement does allows them to post fiscal to complete the public improvements and sell lots, and then final plat a certain number of lots. And with your permission, let's get this first one done.
Council, any questions for Mr. Jobe? I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations on the first PIPA. Go forth and sell lots, all right? Thank you very much. All right, at this time, council, we're going to go into executive session for items 10A. We're going to go ahead and do 10A and 10B, and then we'll come out and do 9I. So executive session, item 10A is city council shall convene into closed executive session for a briefing pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, .072, and .087 regarding, oh, it's not .07, .071, .72, and .087 regarding legal real estate and economic development aspects of possible vendor space at Fisherman's Park. And item 10B pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074, consultation with attorney regarding personnel matters involving recruitment for interim city manager and for city manager, including engagement of search firms. It is 7:31, and we are in executive session. Council, you had an item placed at the dais that had 9I on it. It is a new resolution 2020-25. I would encourage you to bring that with you to executive session. Okay, it is 8:12, and we are out of executive session, and we are going to take action on item 10B. We have a couple of actions we're going to take as a result of item 10B, council.
Yes, mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a contract with SGR for the interim city manager.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Peterson, and a second from Councilmember Ennis, that we accept the contract with SGR to be the search firm for the interim city manager. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. I think we have one more motion.
Yes, ma'am, if I can get my microphone on. I'd like to make a motion to approve Chris Hartung Consulting to assist council in the search for our next city manager.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Roger that Chris Hartung Consulting be contracted with for the search firm for our next city manager. Is there any further questions or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. With respect to item 10A, what we are going to do is move to individual consideration, item 9I, which is on the top of page four. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2020-25 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop River Company, providing for a lease of a .52-acre portion of 11 Bastrop Town tract acres, 5.1 city park located in Fisherman's Park for an annual rent with an option to renew for an additional term upon mutual agreement, authorizing the city manager to execute said lease agreement on behalf of the city and declaring an effective date. Council, we had, you had a revised lease in front of you, and I know our city attorney has some corrections. That's why I intentionally zipped over some of the words in the motion. City Attorney?
Thank you, mayor and council. What you'd be doing is approving the lease as modified by the edits we discussed, including widening the scope of the rentals beyond just inner tubes to include kayaks and other sorts of flotation devices, clarify that the hours of operation for the rental are consistent with the hours of operation for the park, clarify that rent is due monthly, not annually, and delete the section regarding a lien on the personal property. So you'd be approving a lease with these edits and a couple cleanup issues.
Council, any questions or comments? And I believe the other thing that we agreed to was it would be $800 a month for the first year, $850 a month for the second year, and $900 a month for the third year.
Yes.
All right. And, oh, one thing I wanted to mention is we have, and council, you had a copy of this in front of you, Carrie Fossler did not wish to speak. She's with us, she can change her mind if she wishes to, but she does want to support the lease agreement that was called out on 9I. And Ms. Fossler, I would assume that your support stays in place with the corrections that you've heard? We got a thumbs up from Ms. Fossler, so, all right. Council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if I could at this time, to approve the lease. That's in accordance with the terms that's given to us by the city man, the city attorney.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further questions or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. And it is 8:17, and we are going to go back into executive session on item 10B. Do I have to read it again, Alan?
Same word.
All right, I don't have to read it again. Mr. Hartung, would you like to join us for a few minutes? We are back, and it is 8:17, and we are back in executive session. Colin, we good? All right, it is 8:47, and we are back out of executive session. Thank you so much for your patience, and there will be no actions as a result of that second executive session. Council, let's go ahead and do the items for individual consideration. We've got just a few left, and we'll get those knocked out. I'm going to start on the top of page three on 9A. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2020-21 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing a license to encroach agreement with RGG Easements LLC to build a residential driveway and a drainage easement on Lot 2A in the Bastrop Chappa replat, also known as 808 Magnolia Street, as attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So this item is to build a gravel driveway over an existing 20-foot drainage easement. The drainage easement is there because there's six-inch storm drain that's underground, so you wouldn't be obscuring any drainage channels. It's an underground facility that the city maintains. This property was actually replanted in 2017. Neither the title company nor the surveyor picked up on the easement on the plat document, so it wasn't identified at the time that that was an area not to build in. So this is the lot in question. You can see the red area is the 20-foot drainage easement. The blue line down the middle is the storm drain. So what they're asking to do is they're planning to build a house, very skinny house, shotgun house on the western side of the property, and put the driveway on the other half where the drainage easement is.
It's a really skinny house?
It is a really skinny, 18-foot.
Is it something that one would refer to as a granny flat?
It's more of kind of a shotgun.
Shotgun?
It's just long, yeah.
Okay.
So you're talking about, they're talking about putting a house on that lot from the red line over to the property line, over to the buildable line?
To five foot, yeah, yeah, the five foot part in our new code.
How much space? It must be 18?
They have 18 foot to build, and it's about, I think it's, well, 18 plus 5, so 22, 23 feet wide at that point. And we already have the building plans in and approved for that, because we don't require parking in our new code, so they don't have to have a driveway, but they would obviously like a driveway and then put the parking behind the house.
So you've already got a plat with... So you've already got a plat with the proposed?
Mm-hmm.
I wish we, I wish that'd been in the packet. I'm a visual guy, so description doesn't do much for me, and I look at that, I discussed with the mayor today, I, I look at that and I go, I don't understand this. I don't understand how it could happen.
Yeah, so the house, let's see if I have the right pointer, yeah, it's basically right inside that, that building envelope. That, it's, so it's a very narrow house, but they do have plans that have been reviewed and approved that it will work in that location.
So does it back up to the driveway then? It's right, right up on top?
Yeah, so the driveway will be just right to the east of the house.
It's just kind of like a zero-lot-line house in another place.
Essentially. And then they'll be, the parking will actually be behind. They'll have a covered parking spot behind the house that won't be over the easement, so there won't be any permanent structures over the easement, just the driveway.
So the license to encroach is the fact that the gravel driveway is going over the drainage easement?
And since it's gravel, it's not considered a permanent structure?
It would be something that should the city need to get in there to maintain the, the storm drain, we'd be able to go in and have fairly easy access to it.
Well, easy or not, we get access to our pipe if we need it.
Yeah, we get access to it no matter what, but it wouldn't be something that we're going to have to cut through.
Oh, look at Colin.
Oh, thank you.
He's the man.
Yeah, so. So right, it's right in that. So you see there was another house, so they, when they subdivided the property into two lots, it's a 60-foot wide lot, which met our code. The storm drain just took a chunk out of the middle essentially, and so it's a 20-foot wide, so with the, there's no setback then to the east of it because it's their own property, but there's a five-foot setback which is allowed by building code with the type of house they're building.
Can I make a request that in the future we have this kind of?
Yes.
Visual involved?
Yes.
Like I said, I'm, it works for me when I, when it's visual.
Yeah.
You put it down on words, and I go, ah, done work. Great.
Now Colin, now you're just spoiling them.
So it's actually the other side of the street. I think when the street view was done, the, the other house wasn't there yet, so, because that, that other house has been built in the last couple of years, so.
It's on that big lot.
None of the houses were there.
Yeah, that's an old Google.
They don't go down Magnolia Street often.
No good deed goes unpunished, right?
So, yeah, it's right between those two houses, essentially.
Right between?
Yeah, right, I can actually, like, right, ah, be a steady hand.
Of those two.
Yeah, right there is where it's going.
Okay.
Any other questions, council? Councilmember Rogers?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill had asked and answered my question already. Sorry, I didn't realize that was still on.
Anybody want to make a motion? Okay, I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. We're moving on to item 9B. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2020-15 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a best value water, best value contract for maintenance of the SCADA system for fiscal year 1920 to Central Texas Water Maintenance LLC, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, thank you. We went out for bids, and we received two bids from two quality companies. Track Control was one, which was our previous before contract ran out, and Central Texas Water, which they had been here before, before, and they're really good. And after looking at all of the price ranges, Central Texas is just a little bit better value, so that's why we're recommending them. And the money will be coming out of our operating budget. It's not a major project. It's just the day-to-days. If something like a lift station goes down, then we'll have them, if it's control issue, then they would be the ones doing it. If we're doing a project and it's an outside company, they would also do the, any SCADA work for them that would be integrated to our system so that we don't have the worries that somebody got tied together.
Great. Help make your job easier.
Yes, ma'am.
Council?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Great job, Mr. Hancock. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a statement or ask a question to the city manager in items like this that, that are in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Could we have refer back to the page in the budget in our staff report that they're in the future, anything that comes out of the budget or is allocated in the budget, so we can immediately turn back to it if we want to?
Absolutely, and this is, this is an lump sum of the system maintenance, so you wouldn't see specific SCADA, but we could show you the system maintenance line item, and this is something that we just, we do daily, but yes, we can absolutely give you the budget.
But like when the skate park comes back, we could put page 242, that kind, anything that helps would?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
All right, council, we have pulled item 9C. We've already taken care of 9D and 9E, so we're moving on to 9F. Consider action to approve the certification of unopposed candidates for the City of Bastrop's May 2, 2020 election. Madam Secretary?
Mayor and council, the deadline for filing an application for a place on the ballot was on February 14, and the deadline for a write-in candidate was February 18. Upon the close of each, the two deadlines, we had the two places that were up for election. They were each unopposed, so by the Texas Election Code, by state law, I'm required to bring to you in writing the notice of the unopposed candidates. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. I'm not sure what Councilmember Jackson was thinking about not, not saying yes, I guess. So 9F is approved. Moving on to 9G. Thank y'all. 9G, consider action to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 2020-04 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, canceling the May 2, 2020 general election and declaring each unopposed candidate elected to office, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date, and move to include on the consent agenda of the March 10, 2020 city council meeting. Madam Secretary?
Mayor, as the last item was brought before you to notify you of the unopposed candidates, we are now required for the council to take action on counseling the May 2 election, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Madam Secretary, how much money do we save again?
We saved right at $9,000. It was going to cost us $11,000 to have this election, so we saved $11,000.
All right, Councilmember Jackson?
I definitely would like to approve that resolution so that we can cancel that election and save that money. So I make a motion to that effect.
I have a motion to, a motion from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Councilmember Ennis for the first reading of the ordinance, but I, Councilmember Rogers, did you have a question?
Yes, I know that when you brought it to us before, when we talked about the election, there was, we approved more polling stations and everything with the school district, so now the school district pays the entire thing? Is that correct, Sam? I understand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just making sure I understand.
Any other questions? Councilmember Ennis?
Oh, I was just going to say, there may be a special election by that time also, so the state or the county may be doing, since that special election, maybe call for that date, I was told, so there may be another sharing of costs.
But we won't be sharing those costs?
No, we won't be sharing.
Yeah. Councilmember Ennis?
I'd just like to say that I applaud, I'll tag on to Councilman Peterson's applause a while ago. I applaud our citizens' wisdom in supporting both of these candidates for, with, without having opposition. We on this council know how many hours and hours and hours that our mayor and our mayor pro tem put in to accomplishing the job and supporting the efforts of our staff and this council, and I just, I'm really, really pleased that these two folks have, have made it to the finish line without anybody opposing them.
I second that.
Thank you very much. You guys are very, very kind. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
And that will go on the consent agenda for the second reading, correct?
Yes, sir, that's on the, on the motion. Thank you very much. That will be on the consent agenda. And just for a little civics class, you can call the election with a resolution, but to cancel the election, you must have an ordinance. Is that correct, City Attorney?
You can call the election with a resolution or an ordinance by statute, but to cancel it by statute, you must have an ordinance. Thank you, Texas Legislature.
And when we cancel an ordinance, that requires us to have two readings, so that, that's why we're doing that, because I had gotten some questions about that. All right, council, we're on the bottom of page three. We're on item 9H. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2020-24 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, establishing the Cultural Arts Master Plan Ad Hoc Working Group, providing for the working group's duties, composition, initial membership, attached as Exhibit A, your Exhibit A was at your seat. It, it was not in the packet, but it was at your seat, and I'll read those names in just one second, or I may get Councilmember Ennis to read those names. It also establishes quorum, rules of procedure, providing for findings of fact, and providing for an effective date. So, Mr. Jobe, thank you so much for putting the staff report together on this. Council, you'll recall that we visited about this at our last council meeting, and Councilmember Ennis agreed to be voluntold that he would be heading that up since he was the council liaison for BAIPP, and he has worked hard to put together just a great list of people. Do you, would you like to read these names, Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I believe that it represents a cross-section of our arts and cultural community, and these folks are all strong, and they were all excited to be asked to, to serve on this group, and I'll read them off for you right now. Maria Montoya-Hoenstein, she represents 2D and 3D art. She's also a board member and, I believe, vice chair of the Los Feins Art League. Debbie Moore, who represents the film community. Terry Moore, who represents performance art. Chico Portillo, who represents BISD. He's in charge of art in our school district. Kasepikas, who represents history. She also serves on BAIPP, and she's also a member of the Visit Bastrop Board. Dick Smith, who represents the BAIPP standalone. Colin Guerrero will be our city staff if you approve this group.
So, council, one of the reasons that we're doing this is, and the reason it's got that really great name, is that this is not a permanent board, so they, we're not trying to put the, they don't have to do the public notices. They don't have to follow the rules and procedures. It, it's a working group, and Councilmember Ennis tried to make sure that it was a size that they could get something done, and it goes, obviously, without saying that if they find themselves with economic development questions, they'll have somebody come in, you know, they, he wanted some flexibility to have people come in and out. They, the city attorney made sure that we were clear about why they were being created and when they are going to be done, and they'll be done when they come back and make a recommendation to us on how to implement the Cultural Arts Master Plan, and then we'll have a step one, and we'll go from there. So, Councilmember Ennis, just a special thank you to you, because I know this is a great group of people, but it's a, it's a large undertaking. Like so many of the things that we've done when we did the Main Street groundbreaking, people said, we've been waiting for this for years. The Cultural Arts Master Plan, we've talked about for a very long time, so making these great strides forward, I think, is just, I'm really excited for our community. So with that, I would be happy to entertain a motion unless someone has any other questions.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Any further questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. All right, council, we're going to go backwards. We're on the consent agenda. There's only two items, so I will read them. Consent agenda, item 8A, consider action to approve city council meeting minutes from February 11. 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance 2020-03 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the development manual and Article 4.2 plat requirements of the Bastrop Building Block. Technical manual is shown in Exhibit A, establishing findings of fact, adoption and amendment, a repealing clause, severability and enforcement, and providing an effective date. Sarah, motion?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, and the consent agenda stands approved. Citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
We are done with citizen comments. We're on 6B, receive monthly development update. Mr. Flynn? Yay.
Well, hello, I'm your interim planning director, Ken Flynn, and I thank you for the opportunity to present the monthly development update, which there's a lot to go over, so. All right, planning and development, mission and purpose. Mission, preserving the past while facilitating?
Mr. Flynn, you cannot read slides or we will throw you out of the room.
Oh, okay, well, I'm going to read this one.
And honestly, we kind of know the mission and purpose, so you can probably go to the next one.
This one statement I'm going to read, because I really believe in it.
Okay.
Preserving the past while facilitating growth and quality of life in harmony with the vision for the City of Bastrop's future, okay? Well, facilitating is the operative word there, and what we do as planners is to facilitate the development process and infuse collaborative decision-making with informed choices, okay? Because endeavors of this magnitude require a team and require teamwork. All right, going through the numbers here. Counter visits, 98. That's a pretty high number. So some would say we don't have much foot traffic. I would beg to differ. Permits issued, 51. Pre-application meetings, eight. Pre-development meetings, 17. Well, those last two items, pre-application meetings and pre-development meetings, very labor-intensive, probably takes up well over half of our workforce and man-hours. Okay. New CO, 1,006 Unit A, Lucky Beats, and projects, commercial projects underway currently is 365 self-storage there at 510 West?
Mr. Flynn, where is 10,006 Unit A?
That's a good question. I don't even know. Jennifer, can you?
College Street, we lost the name.
Ah.
By Tile Store.
Gotcha. By the Tile Store on College Street. The?
The Accessory Store just got?
Yeah, the, yes.
Used to be Runkles Pool.
Down from the propane and El Corral, that you call Lazano's, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody know where we are now? Okay. Sorry, but that, that slide wasn't helpful, too. I was like, hmm, not sure where this is.
Need some visuals there.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the question.
Okay, other commercial projects, Family Dollar has gotten underway there at 1104 State Highway 95, and you've probably seen the, the flat work that's been going on there. Residential projects, Pecan Park, you got 282 lots, Piney Creek Bend, 75. Piney Creek Bend, 77 lots. The Preserve at Hunter's Crossing, 140 units. And then getting into the state of the Planning Department Assessment and Action Plan. I've been here for four or five weeks now, and every time I go into a new community as an interim, there's always a period of assessment. And so, like I said, I've been here about four or five weeks. The mayor asked me to put together some thoughts on what I had learned so far, so I'll go through this. First comment, their context of comments, okay? Consider the source, okay? So, a while back, about two decades ago, I was recruited to be, to form a development company, a land development company in Dallas. And my financial partner, who was a very successful businessman, knew quite a bit of the ways of the world. I began to look at him as my mentor, so I kind of hung on every word of advice he offered. Well, he used to tell me, "You should, when making decisions, always consider the source of the information that you base that decision on." So, in the spirit of full disclosure, I will tell you that I've worked for eight cities, mostly in the Dallas-Fort Worth market, as Director of Planning and Development or Director of Economic Development. I've been a Main Street Director. I've been Transportation Planning, Transportation Director for Downtown Fort Worth, Inc. And I've also worked for five development companies, okay? So, that gives you a little background as to where these comments are coming from. Again, to me, planning is informed decision-making, and planners facilitate collaborative decision-making and help citizens and developers through the development process. And economic development experience has taught me to look for connections and opportunities for mutually reinforcing scenarios and multiple returns on investment. In economic development work, the thing I like to tout the most that I've done in previous cities is to tout my staff, the city staff, if they will bend, that they will bend over backwards to help developers and citizens through the development process. And just in the short time I've been here, I can, I can say that this staff is totally deserving of that touting by your Economic Development Committee. Because they do. They do bend over backwards to try to make things work. Next thing on the slideshow, more than a right to. Well, you know, holy cow, there's a whole lot going on here in Bastrop. And you've got more going on, as I told the PNC, than any city this size has a right to have going on. All right? You really do. You've got more commercial, you've got more retail than any city this size I know of. You've got more residential development than a city this size. You've got more complex, large-scale planned developments going on in the ETJ and elsewhere. And you've got a staff that has more of their act together than any staff I've seen or worked with. And that says quite a lot for me to say that. And leadership, obviously, the city has leadership with more guts than I've seen anywhere in all of my experiences. For y'all to study, formulate, and work together to implement the vision of a desired future for Bastrop by way of the B3 Code Initiative, that is unbelievable, okay? So, I commend you on all of that. And going forward, in my assessment... Hey, come on. Well, looks like we're stuck.
Colin, can you help him out?
Here we go. Here we go. I have to acknowledge those huge accomplishments, okay? The formation and adoption of the new B3 Code, formation and coordination of the Development Review Committee, instituting rigorous adherence to a newly legislated scheduled approval process for development review. All of these are massive undertakings that have just been newly completed in the last few months. That's a lot that's going on, okay? Those are huge endeavors. And that last item, that process that's been recently instituted to cope with the House bill mandated scheduling of development review, that's the best process I've ever seen as far as how thorough it is that this, your staff has put together. So, again, I'm trying to give you an assessment. You asked for an assessment and some help as far as my recommendations going forward. So, with all of this change, it's all new and change, and together, it represents 180-degree change in the way people do business in Bastrop as far as development. I mean, this total, total change across the board. And with that comes the typical truisms of change, that change is hard, people resist change, they resist giving up the familiar, okay? Usually, there's devil in the details, and this is a very detailed bunch of codes and ordinances. And usually, there's a lot of work to be done when the rubber meets the road, and that's where we are, is in implementation of this code. So, there's a lot of work to be done with that. And so, challenges to overcome, launching of massive new initiatives can be overwhelming. Just to give you an example, there's very few cities in the nation that have done what y'all had the fortitude to do and put a form-based code across the entire city. There's just a handful of them. Just to give you an example, Miami, which is one of them, in implementing their new code, they created or built in a six-month grace period between the adoption date of that code and the effective date of that code in recognition of the need to gear up for implementation. I was involved in an effort to do a comprehensive rewrite of all the development codes in Arlington a few years back. And that city, the decision-makers, once we got that new code created, they created a two-year grace period for developers to pick and choose, would they like to stay under the old code or go with the new code? In acknowledgement of how change is hard and difficult to deal with, and working out all the details of it, okay? So, I think that is one of the big things that we've got to overcome is, and acknowledge, is that this is a massive undertaking, okay? Coincidental with launching these efforts, Bastrop is experiencing an upward trend in development activity. And that's only going to continue with the Austin market looking for more affordable housing solutions and coming this way. The biggest challenge with all of this going on is the fact that your staffing levels in the department are 50% of what they have historically been funded, okay? And this has been exacerbated by the fact that turnover in the department has been pretty drastic. Like, I'm the sixth planning director in about four years. You've had four building officials in the same time period. And that all leads to a lack of organized workforce, okay? So, those are some of the challenges to overcome. As far as an action plan to deal with that, this is tentative, okay? I've come up with six points right now. This could grow, and certainly, we can add things and suggestions. But acknowledge, again, the first thing is to acknowledge and manage this implementation phase of the B3. Implementation of the B3, there's as much work involved in that as formation. And you all know how much work there was in forming the B3 Code. I'm form-based code certified, but I've never implemented a code. So, I've considered it a privilege to be here at this time and place and to go through this exercise with y'all. And it's going to be very interesting to go through it. Implementation, like I say, is important, maybe more important than formulation. I mean, you formulated the vision, and you came together and created one heck of a code, and it's a well-done code. But applying it and implementing it is going to take a lot of work as well. So, what steps we have been working on as far as acknowledging that management is required of that implementation phase, it includes troubleshooting the code for glitches, for details where the devil may lurk, areas that require more focus, like signs, applying the grid, dealing with the ETJ's unique scenarios. We know we're going to be making adjustments as we live with the code, as the rubber meets the road, so to speak. And we've also started reaching out to cities that have actually survived and successfully implemented this form-based code across the entire community to look, to learn, or to benefit from their lessons learned and apply those. So, the second step, second point, would be to design and launch a community enhancement PR campaign to go along with implementation. And that would be to enhance understanding of how the code works, how development can occur under it, and to promote appreciation of the code, because there's certain development advantages that are built into that code that need to be pointed out and highlighted. So, we're identifying speaking forums and community engagement opportunities. We'll be producing visual tools and aids to illustrate how the B3 works. And more significant, we'll be producing feasibility studies, or we need to, I think, that envision pragmatic B3 implementation scenarios. And we take a look at our entire customer base and break it down into segments, from the homeowner that's just trying to build a home to the most sophisticated large-scale development. Each one of those, we need to pick out a typical scenario of development, a development type, and find a site in town and apply that development concept and try to work it through the B3 Code to show it how, show how it can be done, to show that it's feasible, all right? These feasibility studies will go a long way to gain support and understanding of the So, along with that, I think we could probably explore joint venturing with the EDC on the development of this feasibility study-type work. 4B and 4A funding for EDCs allows for feasibility studies, and I've done a lot of this when I was with EDCs, so that these illustrated feasibility studies that show how you can build within the B3, not only will they help us highlight the advantages of the B3 Code, but then the EDC can take them and market Bastrop to developers such as in-town urban housing developers or affordable housing developers that can come to Bastrop and would be willing to develop in accordance to the goals of the B3 Initiative. And marketing like that is a mainstay of economic development. So, I think we could joint venture with them on that as well and have a win-win scenario there. Obviously, the most important, I guess, point here would be to restore full staffing complement as soon as possible. And where we want to start with that would be to fill the vacant permit and planning tech positions that would be on the front lines, if you will, to enhance our customer interface. We want to restore that function. And by bringing those folks online first, they're easier to find than maybe somebody with more experience, but also, they would benefit from mid-level management that we could put in place to train them with the existing staff that is more knowledgeable. And this would alleviate and free those folks up to have more time, quality time, for the intensive plan review activities that they have to do. So, going further, I suppose the next thing would be to organize departmental workforce. And what I mean by that is, if you look at the workforce now, it more resembles kind of a man-for-man defense, all right? Where you're reacting to what comes through the door, and everybody's out there, man-for-man covering. And it's worked good because it's provided for a universal familiarity with the new B3 Code. Everybody's had to work with it and get familiar with it. But it doesn't work so good when you don't have enough staff to cover all the needs. It allows gaping holes in your defense that people run through, and it's already starting to happen, okay? So, I would propose maybe a halftime adjustment, if you will, and shift to more of a zone defense, where you have clearly defined lines of responsibility, and it will facilitate, again, the supervision and training of the new hires that have no experience. And I think that that will produce a more efficient workflow and ability to get the work out. So, the sixth point would be to make strategic adjustments, low-cost or no-cost adjustments to the City Hall remodel plan. And what we're talking about there is to restore functionality of our service counter that was closed off. We really feel like we need to restore that presence, and we've already pulled one of the planners, planning techs that was kind of distantly office in another area of the building, pulled that person back and integrated her back into the overall department. And again, if we implement some of these recommendations, such as the organization of the workforce, the division of labor, so that we have the capacity to introduce mid-level management, then those persons can be close to the permit tech and planning techs that will serve the counter and can easily call them if they need assistance for the more detailed questions. So, in a nutshell, that's a six-point plan right now. Again, it's tentative. We welcome any suggestions or ideas that y'all have, and we'll bring more of this back to you as we get into the staged implementation of these work-plan-action items. Any questions?
I just want to say the most important thing I think I got from your presentation was that is Point 6, because that's what I've heard this about, and I think that's one of the most important things that needs to be, besides, of course, restoring the staffing levels and things, but Point 6 is well-taken.
Thank you. I think it can be accomplished pretty easily. We've got, we're looking at several scenarios, and we'll bring that back to y'all.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Flynn. And City Manager, I know you and I've had a couple conversations, and Council, we've been, I think we've always been united on this, that, Mr. Jobe, you need to do whatever you need to do to make that work. So, if, no cost, we always like no cost, because we don't have to be involved, but if we need to spend some money, whatever, to Councilmember Jackson's point, when you walk into that area, it's difficult to even know where planning is. So, I'm hoping that we still have the letters that spelled out planning. That'd be one step in the right direction, but we've got, everybody needs the best opportunity they can for both the staff that we have and for our citizens and customers that are coming into the department. So, honestly, Mr. Flynn works for you. It's your call, and if you need something from Council, please let us know. Council, is that, everybody agreed on that? Any comments? Any questions for Mr. Flynn?
I appreciate the feedback.
Well, thank y'all very much. Look forward to being successful in this implementation. Pretty exciting.
Mr. Jobe, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
I'm just saying, it hurts your message, and we'll get it taken care of.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Council, we're going to what is almost the last item, best for last. Ms. Waldron, receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending January 31st. Ms. Waldron?
See, I get y'all when y'all are getting tired and, yeah. So, we will cover the highlights of the report. I think I gave detail on the areas that needed detail. This is the report for the period ending January 31st, 2020. There are a couple of funds that we will talk about that are not in positive status. Economic indicators were kind of all over the place this month, so we're seeing some going up and some going down. So, the Texas leading index is just slightly down, which is what we kind of monitor closely. We're 33% into our fiscal year budget. We have a- We have a couple of revenue funds. General fund is just slightly in a warning category, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit later. It, it's basically property tax, the timing on that, and the hot tax fund, and also the cemetery lot sales are a little behind forecast. On the expense side, it's really just the general fund that year-to-date actual against forecast, and we'll cover that a little bit later as well. On the general fund overall, we are negative in that fund. We did have expenditures in January that were over-forecast. Mainly, it relates to the settlement of the former city manager, so we will continue to work on that. I mean, I can't really change forecast, but over time, that will start, that gap will start closing.
So, Council, one of the things that the city manager and I have talked about is there's some positions that were funded that the city manager may be coming back to us that we, that maybe we decide we don't need to fund right now, and he, the city manager's working with the CFO, and they'll come back and tell us what they think the best plan is to move forward. And then, of course, the election that we canceled, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a general fund.
We've got some salary savings, so we're still looking at that. I really just need more numbers before I step out with some of that, but otherwise, I'm just kind of letting you know why, why it's showing that way.
So, Council, we won't be surprised if she brings us a budget amendment, but I know the city manager's just trying to make sure that they've got enough good information to say grace over before they bring something back to us. Is that correct, Mr. Jobe?
That's correct. We'll be bringing that back along with some items that were priority in this last year's budget or in this year's budget, and we think we have found that source, and at that time, we'll bring that and fund those items as well.
Absolutely. Your notes made perfect sense, Ms. Waldron, so thank you for those.
Sales tax is looking good at this point, just slightly over-forecast. Like I said, the property tax, it's a guessing game. I look historical and I, you know, people pay early, people pay late. I've already looked at February, and we will catch up that gap in February, so I'm not worried about that. On the water wastewater fund overall, they're a positive 10%. Their revenues are coming in strong this year, looking good. The electric fund overall is positive. Their revenues are almost exactly break even. On the hotel occupancy tax fund, the fund overall is very strong. I do want to point out that their revenues are a little behind forecast, and when you look at January's, it was quite a bit less than what we forecasted, which would have been what we had last year. And I do know that there are some renovations going on. I've spoken with Susan Smith, and we're just kind of in agreement that that's pretty much what we feel like is the, the reason for the dip. And then there's the legal summary. If y'all have any questions for me?
Council, any questions? Excellent. Excellent job, Ms. Waldron. All right, Council, that brings us to the middle of page four, and it is 9:33. Councilmember Peterson?
Item 12.
I make a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
All right. It is 9:33, and we are adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.